Especially as I turn around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Petrich.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting? And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? Discussion? Comments? Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, petitions, communications, and general question for the members of the community. So we have no one, we'll pass that. A report from the code enforcement officer. He is not here, is he?
He had, um, I think he said Shaysi, they were going to talk with Gray Deal.
Oh, you're right, yep. Alright.
And leave us before either.
What's that called?
He didn't leave us over there before either.
Yeah, he was on vacation last week.
Yeah, the, the list of citations that he gave us, there are some duplicates.
Yes, I know, there's none.
And so I didn't know if he missed presenting one to us.
No, wait, they're not duplicates, they're not, the addresses are different, but people are the same. We can do.
The location.
The location, the location, people own multiple properties.
Okay.
I, I think that's the one that you're referring to.
Oh, property, location, gosh. Yeah, 'cause I looked at the address, oh, the address is the same.
Yeah. Yeah, two different, two different properties.
Okay, okay.
And Janet, the other one we are questioning, Mary found a folder. Medical. What's that?
Do I remember what we're talking about?
Um, you're wondering where, how the order goes.
Oh, correct, okay.
Well, we found another folder.
Okay, oh, good, alright, good. Thank you. Um, here's, here's my report. Uh, good evening, we've been very busy in the village of Champlain this past month. I've heard many, many compliments regarding how beautiful the parks and the streets look. Our crew has been hard at work and this diligence really certainly pays off. I'm aware that there have been some concerns expressed regarding teens who roam the streets and hang out in the parks. I have gotten to know some of these kids and they understand that we are concerned about their behavior, but we are also concerned about their safety. In addition, I recently met with Sheriff Dave Favrell, who has agreed to increase patrols in the village. And in addition, he recommends the establishment of a curfew, which the board will begin that discussion tonight. I also had the pleasure of welcoming Assembly Billy Jones to the village last week. The focus of his visit was infrastructure, he's visiting all the towns and villages in his district. So it was very timely that we explained our need for waterline replacement on Route Nine, right outside of this building, which has suffered numerous breaks, as everyone knows. Hopefully, we will find a combination of funding sources to get this work done in the near future. As many of you know, the Northern Tier Rec Trail has had some damage due to erosion after the heavy rains. Harry McManus and Carl Weiss, representatives from Clinton County, spent some time on the path last Monday to determine how to make these repairs. The village will be responsible for the work on our section with the county supplying the calcium chloride. Did I get that right, Mike? Is that what it is? I couldn't remember exactly what that chemical was. Um, the longboat rowing program has begun. Community rowing will take place every Friday at 6:00 PM. There will also be a youth rowing team, I think they're going to go on Wednesdays at 5:30. The farmer's market will be open starting this Saturday from nine to noon in Paquette Park. We also have organized a music in the park series on four consecutive Sundays, starting on July 28th. You can find details on our Facebook page or on our website. Um, I look forward to seeing many of you out and about during this beautiful time of year. I'm always open to your thoughts and suggestions regarding the village. Call or stop by the office to share your ideas. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Kim, you want to start?
Um. Okay, um. I just, the only thing that I have right now is, um, just to, um, advise the board that, um, I will be signing a memorandum of understanding with AARP. Grant application, um, for the kayak launch hopefully will be announced the 17th of July. Um, that's their tentative, um, announcement date, so hopefully by then, everyone that received grants will be notified and. And we'll form there.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Definitely.
Nikki, do you have a shout out?
Okay, um, we held the longest day of play event in the playground on June 28th. We had about twenty, over twenty children attend with their parents. The weather was perfect this year, so the attendance was great compared to last year's. Um, and they pretty much just played, um, yard games. We had all kinds of little activities set up around the playground, including chalk, Scrabble, can make Scrabble game, Jenga, spills. Yeah. Uh, we started our fun runs on June 23rd. We had our second one last night and the first one was about thirty kids that attended. It was really good crowd. Last night, there was a little less, but I'm sure they're out of town or whatever. Um, so our next one will be July 21st, so that'll be three already, and we have five set up for the summer. Um, next Monday at eleven in the, at the playground is our first summer camp series. Um, it's crafts and science activities and other, you know, assorted games for the kids to come down for a little bit and join in as a community. Um, so that's Monday and Wednesday is at eleven. And that's what happened. Thank you, Nikki. Tom?
Okay, well, I just want to talk about where we're at with the IMA committee. Just named us now. Um, as we talked about in the last meeting, they were receptive to repayment. They, when we met, uh, last week, they came back with requests for, more leverage in regards to water rates. And what they were looking for was, uh, possibly an equal attended board. I explained why it was originally designed the way it was and agreed to put in the wording that was in both IMAs, uh, allowing both boards to have input on approving those rates. But the water board itself is going to be doing the bulk of the work to come up with that recommendation. They're, they're gonna have to analyze all the, um, expenses and revenues and come up with a sound reason why they need to do that. Received an email today, they were, uh, in agreement of that. I had put in some very vague verbiage to try to get it on the table to go in front of the attorneys, uh, in regards to repayment of the owed amount of, on amount of thirty thousand per year. Totally forty-five thousand, because they paid fifteen. And what they came back with was an exact schedule of how they're gonna do that. So I, I view that as positive. And they are, they're going to, um, agree to make a fifteen thousand dollar payment this month, according to this. And then, uh, for 2019 calendar year, we'll say over thirty thousand. Uh, it will be paid by December 31st, 2019. So they're looking at repaying that by end of the year. So again, a lot of positives. The only thing I'm confused on, and I tried to reach out to Rick, I was able to speak to Jason, is they pulled the verbatim, they pulled the, the language back out of the IMA and put in here for how we're going to recalculate this. And it's gonna require further discussion. Because I've never liked that wording, I think that got us in a lot of trouble to begin with because it leaves too much for interpretation. It's not, it's not defined. So hopefully tomorrow night when we meet with them again, we can come up with different wording that is more agreeable. I think that's the only thing holding us right now.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
None of you have had much time to, to digest this because I just received it at four o'clock and two coffees in front of you before the meeting, but.
Right, not having time to really go through it and think about it. I, I'm not even ready to ask questions or offer suggestions.
Right. So, um, we just have to see where the discussion goes tomorrow night. Um, I'll throw back some different wording, possibly tomorrow and. We'll talk about it there.
Sounds good. Thank you for all the work on this.
You're welcome, and, and again, I really think we're still getting closer each time.
I, I agree, I, I feel positive about it.
Yeah, we're not, except that, to me, that wording puts us backwards.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I don't have anything new, other than, um, I did send out the pictures that you all were looking for.
Thank you for, thank you for doing that.
Apologies. Um, so I don't know if you got a chance to take a look at the pictures? What do you like, what do we want to go forward with so we can get this done?
Right, I like the basketball.
Okay.
And I like the, uh.
World or United States?
I think I like the United States better, but I could go either way.
Okay.
I like the United States. I just think that if you got kids down there, they, they probably ought to learn more about the United States before they tackle the world. And also the.
Plainly said.
Plainly said, you don't know the great ones. Um, and basketball.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, no hopscotch? Just be basketball and the United States?
Yeah, I think in terms of the space, that would be it.
Okay. And we're gonna put both of those on the tarmac right now?
I believe so. That's our safest area.
Okay, that's it for me. Nice, sweet, short, to point.
Thank you.
My other part is at the end.
Okay, we'll come back to it at the end. Uh, report from the work treasurer?
Um, and what everyone has there, June, um, expense and revenue. Of course, it's just the beginning of a year. Um, we also have a water and sewer billing. Um, water was sixty-two thousand, five forty-two, twenty-eight. And sewer was sixty-seven thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Any questions on any of this?
In, in the sewer, from the, um, engineering part, the, the twenty-nine thousand, was that all one for the blower component, the, by the way, the, in the engineering personal services? Fourteen forty point one. Twenty.
And you expended eleven?
Twenty-nine thousand expended amount, so I'm leaving that.
Oh, yes, that, that's their final payment.
Okay.
They don't have that yet.
Okay.
Um, but we did do it.
Okay. And obviously, we have planned for that in the budget with, for future. Except, so I'll make sure, 'cause a huge percentage rate.
Right, yeah.
There's one more, I'm gonna add a question.
You have another question, Annie?
Yeah, I'm looking for my blue highlights.
Alright.
Um, the, uh, first one, the Allen Tunnel Corporation, the tax program.
Allen Tunnel, yeah.
Is this new? New, I don't recall that name before.
No, we paid, we paid him for the last.
I know we've had it, but I, the name wasn't familiar to me.
Yeah, no, it's, it's our tax program.
I lose that one.
It's okay.
I'd have to as well, you know.
I, that name did not ring any bell, I knew we paid seven fifty for a tax program, but I was just, "Some new dude?" Never heard of him. Okay, that's it for me.
Any other questions? The rest of you? You have invoices to be added to the warrant?
Mm-hmm. We have additional invoices to add to the warrant of five thousand, four hundred and forty-nine, seventy-three, for a total warrant of twelve thousand, three oh eight, thirty-nine.
Is there a motion?
Is it additional five?
A mouse security camera? What?
It's a mouse.
Mouse for security camera.
For, for the security camera.
For the security camera.
Although, when I first read that, I smiled, too.
She asked me this morning, I couldn't figure mouse.
I'm trying to think when it will be picked up, and then it came to me after. Okay, I'm confused a little, the additional is totaling five thousand.
You take, it, it's thirty-eight, fifty-two, seventy-three, plus ninety-seven and fifteen hundred.
I know, I did the same thing, I'm blank.
Yeah, it's because they, those, I got later this afternoon and we didn't want to waste paper, so.
So the thirty-eight, fifty-two is included in that, now I understand.
Yeah.
'Cause I'm looking at the additional written on it, that's not bad.
And the Maritime Museum, that's for the longboats?
That's for the longboats, and that's what, I suddenly remembered that. Normally, we hand them a check when they deliver them, but I wasn't here that day, and so it just hit me that I didn't hand them a check, so we'll have to nail it. But best to just get that done.
I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices added for a total of twelve thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor. Petrich.
Aye.
You're all confused, I'm sorry.
It'll take a couple years.
Yeah, yeah.
Can interchange.
Been the same for a long time.
I know.
Hard to break that.
Yeah, it is very hard to break patterns, like. Alright, let's see here, I lose my, uh, lose my agenda on all these papers. Alright, report from the superintendent.
Well, it's, um, another busy month on the streets. We've been doing the ditching, standing a few coves, we've been cleaning up some of the dead trees and been opening up down street a little bit. Streets getting ready to pave, we got a few ready. Um, I've been waiting on dig tickets, they've been way backed up, like, extra week or so, but they finally got some, I guess, to help out. I've got, um, I've got a lot to do, I'm, I'm working on Cherry Street right now. And I have, he's coming back down tomorrow, I've got three streets we need to put drainage. The end of Meadow Lane. Pine Street.
Which end of Meadow, all the way down?
Far end, far end and the left, the water comes off.
Yeah.
And it runs down the road, constant. There was, there used to be drainage in here, that Phil, whom Trailer Park put in, and then, uh, it went across somebody else's property and they drove a post through it and then it maybe got torn up when they put the gas in. So I gotta, I've got to like the last four places. I gotta put a, just a perforated tile, not too deep, just to catch that water, 'cause it all drains from behind by UPS. It all comes down to the road, runs down the road, so I've got drainage there. I've got some drainage on Pine Street on this end, from Mrs. Carey's down to by St. Mary's. And then I gotta do something with where, uh, my brakes, where that road is such bad shape, gotta cut that out and fix it. And also Spruce Street, one end to the other, gotta put drainage the whole way through. So, I don't think I'm ever gonna be finished because I'm talking to Carl last week, he'll be here the end of July, beginning of August.
Oh, wow.
We're gonna do whatever we can, and tomorrow, I'm meeting with a guy from DigSafe to show him.
So once you get that approval from him, you build a start on it?
Build a start.
Spruce, for example?
What's that?
Build a start, do you start on Spruce, or?
Well, I'm trying to finish Cherry, Cherry's in bad shape, too. We're gonna make a turnaround at the end, we cut a bunch of trees, we can, can't even turn around if we back out of there. And the way the road is, it's not, um, it's not good. We clean trees right to the bike path, actually, too, because that's where I gotta get on the other side to ditch out that, where the washouts are. And someday down the road, if that gets paved, you'll have to go in there and back all the way to Paquette with trucks. I'm gonna have to figure something out, because we can only get so far, uh, even to, to Mole. You're pulling it down to the bridge, and then you gotta come, you know, you gotta get from the other side. And on the other side of Paquette's ours, too. So I'm gonna have to figure something out, but we have to wait up by the school and come back, or. So anyways, we're, we cleaned some trees and where that rubble, some of that rubble was, we're, we're cleaning some of that up. Anyway, right now, we're working on Cherry, we gotta make a turnaround, and, but the drainage is gonna take me, I mean, there's gas to every house, almost every house, I mean, Spruce, and that's all gonna be hand dug. Looking four feet, you're supposed to, but it is what it is, we're gonna, we're just gonna keep going on it. We also have, uh, well, I could, uh, once we can get this part of it done, then I'll have to work on the bike, bike path. Bring stone in, they got a special spec stone. Tamp it, and then put calcium, wet it, tamp it. I've got this water break down here that's been leaking, I've gotta get that dug. Just gonna try to do it this week, but we'll see what happens. Once that's done, then I'm gonna try to get all those sidewalks poured, get concrete before the yard sale weekend, all that in August. Gotta get the, the sidewalks done, so. Um, that'll be one of our next things, side, sidewalks and curbs, and we still gotta do flushing, so. Days are long, but not long enough.
Hey, they're clicking bikes fast. Did you get any help with the flushing, uh, procedure?
No. No, we're just gonna do it, but it's gonna take us a few weeks to do it. It just went, I mean, it's, everything's a crunch, now our, our backhoe, we got a cylinder, I gotta, probably next week, we're gonna have to do something, take our backhoe apart, that's probably gonna be down for a little bit. Just, the, extend the whole cylinder inside, the hole is leaking. So, we had a couple codes this week. It wouldn't move, and I called them to bite out the code, they said it's an issue between a computer and a shifting lever. So they sent the guy over. Didn't change anything. Um, they wanted me to make it do it, well, it happened in six hours, we used it for six hours, it happened again. It's not like I can make it. So, nothing to, you know, if it happens again, let them know.
Something that was wrong.
We can't, we can't, I mean, we haven't got the bill, but I can, I just gotta be cheap. I mean, you're paying from Colchester to here, it's time, plus the violence, and then back. You probably gonna have a four or five hundred dollar bill and nothing to, didn't change anything, you know? I don't know. 'Cause that's not, that's not under warranty, so.
It's not under warranty, you're saying?
No, that's, uh, fourteen, so we're almost six years. Yeah, we've been out a couple years in the backhoe, the motor still is, but the backhoe's not. So, um. I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh, see if we can get that cylinder apart. I mean, I'm a fellow locally that will take it apart, and if I have to, it's a cylinder itself, I'll bring it to Plasberg, help them out, have them rebuild it, because I, I did talk to the, kind of, Kane, and I told him how much it was per section to rebuild, parts and labor. And he said it's way cheaper than it's a week, and plus how many trips to Colchester they got to take back and forth. So, just to get it apart, and the hard part is, it's, gotta take the whole wound part. So it's not like it's, if it was a cylinder on the outside, it's no problem, that's the only one that's internal.
I know.
And you can't see where it's leaking, so I don't know if the packing's blown on the cylinder, and it's leaking by, or if it's fitting, but really, without getting in there, taking it apart, taking the cylinder out, rehooking it to the lines, energizing the system, then you can find out where it's leaking. It's not, I don't, it's not a hose, it's a spring, because it, under pressure, doesn't seem to get worse, but it's constantly, it's constantly leaking, I picture.
It's probably packing, so.
I'm guessing, or it could be a fitting, you know, it could be a, or O-ring fittings, could be a fitting leaking, but. Anyway, either way, it's gonna be fixed.
Once you get it separated, are you gonna sleeve it or make this?
I'm hoping. It's, it's just not easy to, gotta be able to slide the whole wound out.
Can you do that here yourself?
No, quick, possibly, but, uh, wouldn't bring it, probably the mowers.
Okay.
Supposed to get a hole in this leak, even opening, I'll open up if I gotta, get it apart. You know, use a forecliff or whatever, get it apart, and then get it fixed.
Yep.
'Cause I keep, now's not a good time to be down, we've got so much digging to do. That, I mean, it's never a good time, but right in the middle of everything. And I was surprised when they told me, when they told me that end of July, beginning of August. I mean, that's around the corner. But we do have to get that leak down here fixed, too, it's getting worse. Hasn't let go, where we could, you know, have to go do it, yeah.
Hang on, I'll be wondering, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, well, it's, we, we got a message, too, that, 'cause the water getting stagnant with the sun, you know, it's getting green on the side of the road there, just from the constant. Even as hot as it's been.
It still stays wet?
Yeah. I don't know if it's, on the end of the van leaking, or if I got in the hole, I won't know till we dig it.
But you can't dig it, condition of the backhoe, correct, right?
I can, but if something happens, then.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's where we are with that. But the paving, you gotta, I mean, when they come and go, that's it, it's the only chance we got, so. I did the easier, the few easier ones first, those are ready, and then started on, started on the next ones.
Yeah, I'm worried about Spruce, I'm not sure if we can get that done.
No, I'm, that one, probably wait for that one last, and if they, if we have to, I'll, I'll pave it anyways. I'll cut, just cut the shoulder, then I'll pave it, then I'll have to dig it later, 'cause that's gonna be done off the roadway, between the sidewalk and roadway.
Oh, okay.
Um.
That, that's, that's reasonable, Mike.
So, the thing is, with the new asphalt, your machine's gonna be half on the asphalt.
I know, but.
You don't wanna crush the edge, but.
But it's so bad.
It's, it's bad.
I don't wanna miss it.
It's bad. Everything's coming up to the center.
That's probably the worst street, seriously. That, that one and Ashland are two worse than the whole village.
Well, Ashland and Patricia are ready, other than sweeping them again, they've even drawn mud and whatever, but, uh, Moore Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those three are good to go. Cherry's not that long, we got the bottom half, the shoulders covered, I gotta do the top end and, and get a place we can turn around. And, but they didn't, I was waiting for dig tickets, so he's supposed to be marking out tomorrow. And I'll probably do Meadow Lane next, 'cause I've got, it's only, it's only like the last four places. If we can get that one done, um, that'll be one more road that we can knock off, and then I'll have to decide whether, uh, Spruce, or, I'll probably start in drainage on Pine, 'cause like I say, if we have to, Spruce can always be paved anyways.
I agree with that.
And then, um. Other than I gotta tie into the end, I'll have to cut the intersection, we have new asphalt, because that, you know, it tightens that drain, it's in the road, it's in the edge of the roadway. So if worse come to worse, I'll have to patch that section. And either way, it's gonna be, it's, we had moved some drainage here. Yeah, so. Uh, that's about all I have for this time. I know. I took a few days off in between there.
Good for you.
Good.
Uh, if you need help, keep in mind, I go to Plasberg every day, so save an hour of driving. If there's things that need to be dropped somewhere or delivered, I'm happy to help however I can while you're in this crunch time.
Usually, I mean, we don't have that many, but usually, a couple times a month, we go in, um, for samples, but it just depends when they are, and a lot of times, if, one of us, if we have stuff to give, we try to make one drip and do it at the same time, or Woody's been bringing them down, taking a doctor's appointment or whatever.
Okay, well, let me know, that'll help, I'm just looking to cut any time, if that would help.
No, I appreciate it. Are you gonna go down the shovel, 'cause we got something?
Restricted on that, sorry.
I'm gonna see when we get over, if, I probably won't even get that far, but, um, if we do get over there, I'm gonna see if I can borrow a compressor. Or make a cone and maybe use like an Amright on some of the gas lines, to cut around them, you know? It's the dirt. Use a compressor, reduce it, we put a cone to it, the rocks won't come back, and makes it easier.
I was just gonna ask, is it something that a very small excavator could do, like the rented one?
Doesn't matter, you're within four feet, you have to handate. And that's right, like in the winters, you can, I mean, it's impossible.
What are we operating on right now, staff? What are we operating on right now, staff, wise? Is everybody here?
Yeah.
Do we need to look at a temp, would a temp be of any assistance for the next month to be prepared for the roads? Because we've lost out in the past couple of years now, we don't wanna lose out when they show up if we're not ready.
Yeah, I mean.
Please make note that Amy Garrick is talking about spending money, staff, please note that.
I noted that very quickly. It's the beginning of the year.
My ears burst right up.
Doesn't matter what time of year, it's an exception.
I mean, even, even mowing and trimming cleanup, there's, there's always, there's always something.
I mean, there's just so much going on right now, in fact, you haven't flushed, we've got, um, you know, that, the leak down there that just keeps on going, you've got sidewalks that need to be poured.
Yep, I agree. If you got.
You know, we're in a position that we can afford to bring you in help, if we have the right help, but tell me, would that be of assistance or a waste of money?
No, I, I mean, if we can, the biggest thing is it, I suppose, it's best we could get, where it comes down to.
Well, if you can run along, if you can run along more in a shovel, I think it would help you.
Well, do you wanna think about it?
Yeah.
Seriously.
We have to babysit, forget it. You know, you can't.
Right.
Right.
No.
I mean, using some of the community service to trim it, I mean, we had to grab some.
Have to have the right person.
So, can we contact West staff and see if they have anybody that, that we can just put.
E I.
Let me talk to Mike and let's, let's talk to him. The board doesn't mind, we'll see.
We're gonna need to make a motion of approving an additional, um, temporary person, possibly after review, otherwise, we have to get back together to vote on it.
We budgeted, we budgeted for summer help, I believe.
Right.
West, and West staff's always been really good about sending us.
Yeah, we've gotten, we've gotten very good people.
Right, if we don't need to vote on it, then that's fine, we can just leave it at that. Or call, and we can, takes two seconds to run in for all of us.
Definitely we can vote on it, we have it budgeted, right?
We have it budgeted, I don't think we've ever voted on.
I don't think we have to vote on it.
Yeah, but anything is budgeted, we still have to vote approval on expenditure. Yeah, you bring in a temporary person with the parameters, we should.
I, I think we'll vote on it.
And your approval payment of whatever.
Proof of payment of that person, I don't know that we voted on it, staff.
So, so you wanna make a motion to, um, to look for someone to help, Mike?
Yeah, if you wanna cover it, let's just make the motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I make a motion to research the options available to hiring someone from West staff, the appropriate staff member to, uh, assist for the next month, two?
Probably two.
Probably two.
I would say at least two.
Probably two, one here, babe.
Did, did you say two?
Two months, I did, two.
I thought you did, just wanted to make sure you said it loudly.
I, I second the motion.
Any other discussion on that?
It's a split personality, coming out.
No, I, I think we need it.
All right.
I like it.
Staff, so that's not, that's not a whole call, even though it's money, is it?
No, you didn't have, you don't know how much you're gonna expend.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion passes, thank you, thank you, Amy.
You're so welcome.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, not, not right now.
All right, correspondence?
Correspondence from Pierre Patterson regarding parents' ticket, correspondence from Deborah Priest, or Prest. Correspondence from Anita Bailey requesting water waste, wastewater credit, and notice violations of parents' tickets.
Okay. New business? The, uh, New York M E P Municipal Energy Program, I'll tell you a little bit about that. Um, and then you can make a decision if this is something you wanna learn more about, and invite this man to come address us. Um, this is an energy program that's recommended by Nikon, uh, it's called Good Energy. It's a C C A, which is a Community Choice Aggregation. Um, the idea being that they combine villages, cities, towns into one large, into large groups, so that they can seek bids for cheaper supply rates. Now, this is for residents, at this point, this is for residents. The benefit, of course, is that residents will save money on their electric bills. Um, everyone is included unless you opt out. So, I ask him, what's the major complaint, and he says that you have to opt out. It's not hard to opt out, but people realize that their supplier has been changed, and they didn't know about it, because they didn't know this was coming, so they had to make a, they had to opt out. As I said, it affects the supply portion of the bill, which is about fifty to sixty-five percent of the bill. The process, if we want to go through this, is that we, um, the board agrees to select Good Energy as the supplier for the village, for the residents. We pass a resolution, uh, and a local law. They gather the data about our energy costs here. They select the, um, energy supply company. And they spend two months doing the outreach in the village, making sure that everyone understands what it is, there's a public hearing. Um, and then whatever supplier they select that gives us the best deal, um, is the one that will be the supplier for the residents. If they find that they can't find someone that beats our current price, then they won't put us into the program. Um, Shazie is just starting this, uh, they're, they're, they're ready to go, they've already done the, the resolution, and, um, they're getting their customers lined up. I said, what, have you had any cities that it was not successful because they already had cheap electrical rates? And he said, um, around the Syracuse area, they have not been able to beat their rates. So. If you want him to come, he'll come in August and explain it in better detail than I did.
Well, we have some of the highest rates, so.
I, I would think that this would be.
Worth taking a look at.
Yeah, I think this would be beneficial for our residents, it doesn't hurt us to learn more about it, it doesn't hurt us to have them collect the data and see if they can beat the rates.
There's no cost for that.
There's no cost.
Okay.
No, and there's no contract. So, say you sign up and you don't like something about it, you just can opt out, there's no contract involved.
So is this like what Ross's Point does in getting their electricity so cheap, are we talking this is gonna be that dramatic?
No, it's gonna be different.
I don't think so.
Ross's Point, it's gonna make a agreement.
City of Plattsburgh?
They, yeah, they've got a agreement with what Hydro Quebec or something, yeah, yeah.
Well, they get that, how do we get it?
Years ago, didn't it?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think it's Hydro Quebec, it's, it's.
It's something from Canada though, isn't it?
I thought it was from, it's in Howard Dam.
Oh, maybe it's the Saint Lawrence Seaway.
Yes. Yeah, it's in Howard Dam, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion that you invite them to the meeting if there's a motion that needs to be made.
Okay, all in favor? I'm aye, opposed, all right, I will do that. Okay, um, the curfew law. As I mentioned earlier, uh, Sheriff Favreau, uh, recommended that we have a curfew law. I know there are pros and cons on this, um, I did a little bit of quick online research and found that Serenac Lake has one, Tupper Lake has one, the Village of Palmyra has one. They all vary slightly of age and time and which day of the week and all of that. I guess I'm looking for some input and to what the board feels, if this is something you would want to do.
We're going to enforce it.
The sheriff.
Oh.
He, what he said was, and you can add to this, Tom, what he said was that it puts a little teeth in seeing kids walking around at, you know, one o'clock in the morning and saying, you have a, there's a curfew law here, you need to go home, or we can, what did he say, we can cite you?
Yeah, they can, or, they can bring them in for questioning, the barriers can get them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Whereas without the curfew law, they don't have a reason to stop them.
Yeah, they can't really.
Even if they're just wandering, not breaking the law, they have a, they have a reason, um, to question them.
Question, get their names. City of Plattsburgh's had one since, what do you say, sixty-six?
Fifty-six, yeah.
And, uh, it's my words, because it gives you, you know, it's a proactive way of trying to make things, it was what it is, really.
Is this for a certain age group that we're talking about, or everyone?
Yeah, well, Serenac Lake was under eighteen, Tupper Lake is under sixteen, uh, Palmyra was under eighteen. And the times were between nine thirty, ten o'clock, and eleven o'clock. After that was the curfew, until about five in the morning, with a lot of exceptions, like a job, being with a parent or a guardian. Uh, coming back from a sporting event, or there are a lot of exceptions running into it.
Yeah, cause we have a lot of walkers up to McDonald's that are openers and closers.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if it's related to a job, that's an exception.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either, I think, I think it'd be a positive thing to do, in regards to.
All right, so we should further, why don't I get, there are more, uh, laws together, and see if we can put something together and contact, um, Tom Renee. Are we in a agreement here, Amy, or looking at me like you don't really like it?
Well, I, I think, we obviously have an issue, and it, it needs to be addressed, but it just seems kind of like, uh.
Police statement.
Yeah, it just seems, but yeah, kids under eighteen, they shouldn't be out there.
Maybe it's set at a reasonable time, it's say eleven o'clock if you want, or.
Right. Right. Yeah, I mean, we do need teeth, I'm all for that, gotta do something.
We really do.
What, what hours do?
You could see, you could see, you could see two or, two hours after sunset or something, cause it does change from, you know, in the winter time, four, five o'clock in the afternoon, it's dark, in this time of year, it's nine o'clock, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't know how you.
Yeah, at the same time, I don't think, if you got kids down there skating in the skating rink at, you know, eight o'clock at night, and they're not doing any damage. It's way past two hours after sunset in the winter time.
You guys have to decide how you wanna.
Yeah, I think the time is the right way to go.
Yeah, I think, uh.
And I think eighteen is probably a good age to.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go to sixteen.
Yeah, we'd use, yeah.
Okay.
I would say ten or eleven o'clock.
I'm with you on that.
All right, okay.
No way.
Let me, um, put something together for next month.
What happened when you went down, uh, that, the other morning that I stopped and they were at the boats?
I spoke with them, they, I went down and spoken to them at the docks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went down one day too.
I spoke with them, they were all right, and I apologized, and, um, but.
At what point do we stop talking to these kids, do they say offenders over and over, where are we at?
Well, I don't know if it's the same group, but the group that I've been working with, um, I, I think I'm getting somewhere with them.
Okay.
So, I think we keep talking.
What does it hurt?
I don't know, maybe Nikki can add to that.
That's all we do.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I am establishing somewhat of a rapport with them, they're, this particular group is pretty young, talking about.
Thirteen years old.
Yeah, well, they're actually from second grade up to fourteen.
Oh wow, second grade.
But, but they're listening and they're responding, so. However, they really should not be walking around at one, two, three, four o'clock in the morning.
And are you having that young of kids being out here at those hours?
I don't know if that, the youngest one is out at that hour, but these are twelve and thirteen year olds that are wandering around in the middle of the night.
Okay, and are you making CPS calls? Should, where are the parents? Sorry, speaking from experience, probably should be made CPS.
I haven't actually.
I'm gonna get you a badge, we're gonna put you on duty. We're gonna change it to the ward.
I haven't, I have not, I mean, I've not been out at that time.
That puts a little bit more teeth though into it as well, when you bring in that outside agency, that you have these kids that are wandering the streets at these hours, where are the parents?
Yeah. Yeah. I have not been out at that time to see them, that's just reported from other people.
Okay. And the camera.
Yeah, we've seen, I mean, you know, eleven, well, yeah.
We've seen them.
And that smaller ones, someone's, cause they're with their siblings, their siblings are thirteen, fourteen years old, so the, you know, they're following along and.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, things, maybe sometimes the parents aren't, yeah, they are, I mean, and it's not all of them, you get a group together, but there's only a few that spoil it for the rest of them.
They're babysitting.
They are, they are babysitting, right? Yeah.
And that's the, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
And some of them, the parents aren't there, so they're just, some of the kids I know weren't even from here.
Right.
More sports are from, you know, somewhere else, Ross's Point, they're from somewhere else.
Yeah.
They get together, and that's when things start falling apart.
Yeah. All right, I'll work on that. Uh, the alternate land bank proposal, I think I sent that to everyone, I believe, I heard back from at least a couple of you, um, it actually looks better to me.
It does.
Um, I like the way they're separating the demolition from the rehabilitation. Uh, Kimberly, as I said, Kimberly said we need to do nothing, we already sent in a, a letter saying that we wanted to participate. So we're set with that letter, unless the board felt that they did not want to with these changes.
That was fine, that was fine.
Yeah, all right, okay. The NYMA requirements and recommendations, Mike, you can weigh on the, I'll, I'll do a little bit, and then I'll ask you to weigh in on some of this, okay? Um, we had a, a man named Henry, I think.
Yeah.
Um, come, or, um, Vandermeer, I believe.
Something like that.
He is a risk assessment fellow, uh, that works with NYMA Insurance Company, and he came and spent some time with us and made some recommendations. Um, some of the basic ones are, we need some kind of either mulch or bark chips or something under the swings and.
All of them.
All of the equipment at the playground.
Mulch, nine inches deep.
Yeah, that's one thing.
He recommends.
No, it's required.
Required, you're saying, you're part of the, of the law of the.
It's required, he said it's required by New York State Playground Law.
Yeah, but we can't put that loose stuff in the flood zone.
Yeah, so that is exactly what, it's exactly what I said, so I threw it back at them, and I said to our local rep, um, at Northern, and I said,
So that means.
I said the same thing.
Okay.
I need a reading between FEMA and New York State Playground on what's acceptable here, because we're not going to go out and spend money and then get in trouble for it.
Right.
So, that's where it stands right now.
Okay.
She's gonna research that.
Cause we went through all this when we started the playground.
Yeah, I know, we all remember, yeah, yeah.
I know, we all remember it.
Um, some of the other recommendations, um, included, uh, stuff, all the signs have to be inventoried and checked twice a year.
Night, a lot of them have to be changed.
Yeah.
We gotta do a, we gotta do inventory, location, every sign in the village.
What?
Because if somebody gets in a wreck and there was a sign here and it's missing, you have to know there was a sign here and be able to prove it. For an accident, for, uh.
So all of this is a red liability.
And it has to be, they all.
Right.
They all have to be checked once during the day and once at night for reflectivity.
Yeah.
And if they don't, if they're not, needs to reflectivity, it's gotta, they gotta be changed, which most of ours have to be changed. Yeah, so you want to spend money, now.
Did you look? Did you look into getting help from the college to do the inventory?
Not yet, yeah, I have not, yeah.
Um, so, do up a map?
No, I'm gonna put them in, drink the GPS, I can do it in the layer, right on the, on the map, so I have it, and know where everyone is.
Oh.
In his spare time.
Yeah, it's.
We can change, but I'll stop sign layers, road sign layers, whatever it may be, and then, cause those don't change, when you put it in there, you know the location of them.
Right.
That's our satellite, and we can.
I can help with that.
We can, you, you can do GPS?
Warwills. Show me how to do it, and I'll do it.
Warwills supposed to be getting, uh, some college students in or something?
I'll help you.
Wow, that's cool.
Well, Mike, I need to contact them.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was.
Yeah.
Well, I heard you say something, and I'm like, oh yeah, I thought I remembered. Yeah.
It's hard, cause they don't know, it's hard too, cause they don't know what's ours, what's not ours, what, or what's supposed to be there, you know? Cause I was gonna utilize them too to try to get, like, my GPS, all the water shut offs on the Ross's Point and all that. But, you know, it's gonna somebody locate ahead of them, you know, I know about where they are, flag them, and then they can go through and shoot them or whatever, but it just takes.
Well, Google Maps just drove through the village earlier today.
Never a good time.
They went by my street, they had cameras all over the top of their car, so we got an updated Google map, we'll just Google it and sit there and write them all down.
It's good and bad. Yeah. But they all have to be, um.
Sometimes, it's a long time to know.
It has, last time.
There's a lot of them that need to be updated, you know, and some are all cracked.
Yeah, yeah.
Go to Berash, who does that?
So we'll, we'll work on that.
I'll go.
A couple of the other recommendation, not recommendations, requirements, were, um, we have to remove our sidewalk law from our book. And put in the New York Village Law, well, New York Village Law will cover it, but ours is not appropriate, so we need to take care of that.
Oh yeah.
Which I think is later on the agenda.
We've, no, no swimming signs, no skating signs.
Yeah, we need no, yeah, no, no skating signs at the boat launch, for people skating in the winter.
No skating signs down at boat launch. In the winter time.
The park has to be, uh, dust to dawn, rather than.
Than, rather than.
Times is at nine.
Correct.
Um, playground has to have a sign for kids under the age of twelve.
It's the only thing that people can, old kids that can use it, and I've got that, got a picture. I took a picture of the sheet, the sign is two foot by three foot, and what has to be on there.
That's a problem too, and I discussed this before, everyone rejects.
Okay.
Cause there's no equipment down there, and the adult equipment's supposed to be separated, not even in the same place, but there can't be any kids that use that playground over twelve years old.
Well, that's a problem, and we know that.
Well, if they use it, we're, we're using liability from us to decide, and said. Well, if they use it, it would use the liability from us 'cause the sign says twelve.
Says twelve, yeah.
'Cause I, I mentioned about we have a swing.
Yeah.
I said that's, 'cause that's for the twelve year old and the toddler sits on the other one. If they break the law by not following the sign and they get hurt, then you're not liable. That's what it comes down to, a liability.
That's the idea.
It's all about relieving them from the blame.
Correct, correct. I don't really have the final list from him yet, but those are the things that came up right away. And I'll certainly share it with you when I get it. Thank you. You're welcome. Wow.
He was very talkative.
Yes.
So was the policy up again, end of the year?
We just, we just signed on to this new company.
We just did it. And actually, we, we did, we did save a lot of money when we did it, but, but in effect, we're going to spend a lot if we have to buy, you know,
Right, for one year. I know it is. Right, right.
Fifty stop signs and.
The thing, uh, if you don't, when something happens, you're gonna spend it, I guess anyways, in the long run.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
So, I mean, the recommendations are, you're just not, you're just making them out off the wall, it's, there is a guideline for.
That's what Mike's trying to say, no matter what company you go with, these.
I hope we survived all these years. That's my question.
They're probably gonna.
Well, it came up, they did ask when we had our last risk assessment and I don't think it had been done for a really long time. Someone else would have told us to do these things, I'm sure.
I don't ever remember, I'm sorry, but I don't ever remember anybody coming here other than Perma and talked to Mary Nye last year or was our risk. Right, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get this all taken care of. Um, alright. We have to remove the sidewalk language from the current code, which I just mentioned. I don't know if that requires a vote. I mean, we have to do it.
We actually have to.
It's going to require a.
Write a new law, right?
Yeah, it's gonna require to.
'Cause they, that's a cost to file.
Take, it's a new law out.
To take it out, yes.
Yeah?
Right, and you don't need to do anything to put the New York State law in there.
We don't have to do anything.
It just, it just falls back on that, if something in your local law.
Right. Right. So we're gonna have to write a local law for that.
Yep.
To, to take that, to take it out. Alright. Well, that's what we'll do then. And we have a wastewater credit. Trying to go there. And I believe it fits our guidelines.
Yeah, I'm gonna push it, hold the move outside, I gotta make sure.
Any questions to Mike on this?
No, seriously, you attended it first.
No, straightforward.
Yeah, I took a picture of the holes, it was real hard.
Yeah.
So I make a mission, I'm, I'm a mention.
Make the mention.
I make a motion to approve the sewer credit for two thousand gallons, equalling nine dollars and sixty cents. Due to this beating our criteria in our policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion passes.
Alright. Old business. Uh, contamination cleanup. They can tell you that, um, there were three, finally, three bids submitted for the paving outside the front of this building. And it's supposed to, the award should be given this week or next week and it should be done within a couple of weeks. That's all I can tell you about that right now, unless you have any other information.
I don't.
So at least they did get three bids, because they first only had one. Uh, water project, we've already discussed. The LED streetlight conversion. Troy and Banks personnel have already been in the village collecting data for the GIS audit, which will be forwarded to Wendell Energy, who will prepare the LED selections for us. So we are moving forward on that. Water line replacement study, um, there's really nothing else to say on that at this point. I'm meeting with Candace Fulmer on Wednesday to proceed with, uh, with the application to fund a study.
Is she coming here Wednesday?
She is coming here Wednesday if you'd like to join us. Nine thirty, yeah, that'd be great. This is called a search grant. So many studies before you even get any money. Sorry if my enthusiasm is not showing. Um, on the UV contamination system, I have no new information. Matt is still, Matt Cooper is still writing that, that proposal. And on the security cameras, Mike, I know you've done.
He was supposed to be here today to finish the water plant, but he didn't show up. So what I've got, we've got a lot of wires ran and I moved everything today out of the treatment building into the office. When they put it in there, they put the mold and they put the router, they put everything in, it's not really good for it. So we ran all the wires in the attic and put, moved everything to the shelf in the office, so. She's just gonna come and move one and, and the one we took down from over here, she's gonna put in the other building, so I'm gonna move it.
Yeah. Okay.
He was supposed to show up today. Supposed to show up last Monday, no.
Did he call? Should I call tomorrow?
You're supposed to show up last Monday, you said?
Yeah, well, it was, it was been two weeks or whatever. He should, he did show up and fixed one. He wanted to know when we were gonna be ready as well. Did you drop me the wire?
Oh, no.
They brought the wire, we ran the wire, didn't bring me enough to run both of them. So he was coming, came last Monday to bring the wire and didn't show up till, I think, Tuesday. And then he was coming this Monday to hook them up and I haven't seen him yet, so.
Okay.
But our stuff, we finished this morning, so our stuff is done, so whenever he shows up, and.
Alright, I'm calling him tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, yes.
I have one item I just thought of, I need to mention from the building, if you don't mind me backing up to my report.
Oh, yeah, back it up, yeah.
Um, I met with Scott Blow on the sign and he, he's been behind, he hasn't started it.
Oh, okay.
He's hoping the end of July, first week of August to, to fit into the schedule. And I want to remind everybody, I know we talked about this a long time ago, uh, because we're putting the, the R S has to paint, paint the scene. We're putting the boat launch, the longboat, I mean, on there that will be, we're responsible to pay the R S, somewhere around two hundred dollars. But the sign itself is free.
Okay.
Do you know what she always turns when you start talking money? Do y'all notice that? Do you take note of that?
Figured it was a good night.
It would be, it would be about two hundred dollars for the R S. I got that. Amy, did you hear that?
He's used to the fire breathing out and when money comes.
Maybe that's it, maybe it's a.
Something I'm gonna move, that smile will soften the blow.
I am, I'll put you over here and then you can go right across.
Exactly, I'll turn that way.
Yeah, just, yeah, just do it. Uh, paving dates, we discussed, end of July, early, early August.
It was proposed, but.
Proposed, yeah.
We'll see, we'll, we'll try to keep in contact as they get closer to Musa, to find out, keep us updated.
Yeah, yeah. Hydrant flush, and you already talked about Mike. The kayak launch grant, we'll get an update on that soon. And fund balance policy was aiming to.
You too, okay. So, went through all of the fund balances that you sent. I don't know if anybody took a look at them. Um, some were very simple, some were too simple, um, others were too.
Wordy.
Wordy.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and here to within whatnots don't work for me.
Mm-hmm.
So, I kind of cut and pasted. So, what I thought was the clearest and most concise combo is this combination and I can copy it for everybody. Um, but I took parts from a couple different, um, pieces. So, the, the opening was the Village of Bright Waters that I liked the best and I liked the ones that were villages specifically, 'cause I really made it more particular. I liked having the definitions of all the different fund balances, so it makes it very clear of where you're putting the money and, and whatnot. Um, and also specifying the GASB statement about fund balances and how they're classified. You basically have to have that in there. And then I cut to Ross's points because I really liked how they ended, coming up with section four with theirs. What I chose was the ones that didn't go into specifics, that, you know, we will maintain fifteen percent of the, ba, ba, ba. When we get into percentage, shoot me dead, you know, there's just no way. So it's more of, um, the village officials must consider a number of factors when determining how much on restricted fund balance and reasonable to carry over and then what are some of the factors that are reasonable in, in listing those out? So, you know, it's clear as mud as to figure, but the definitions are much more clear and how we go about that process. So, I'm happy to make copy of this order if you so choose. Or we just move forward with it, it's up to y'all.
So I would recommend we each get a copy and spend some time looking it over and then next month we discuss it and pass it.
You have to copy. Yep. Okay, sounds good to me.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, it wasn't sent electronically, so I couldn't actually truly cut and paste, I literally.
You had to.
Cut, no, I'm cut.
No, she literally.
Oh, you actually got it pasted. I used to do that.
When we met tonight, I'm like, oh, you meant that literally.
Oh, that's how I did that for, I did that for years teaching.
Right, yeah.
It worked, it works.
So, and first I had a lot of sections and so they were all strips that I had, you know, spread out to cut and, and then I, but then I started limiting some that I didn't really like and what I found was it was only two policies that I ended up really liking the best for the verbiage when I compared them side by side, when I had those choices, so this is the end.
Cool.
That sound, that sound good? We'll get those copies made at the end. Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, I believe we're going to go into executive session.
Yes, I'd like to call an executive session to discuss a personal issue.
Do we have to go out of, you have to go out of, I make a motion, we.
Oh, yeah, okay. Close the regular meetings.
Close the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And now most here.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright.
I make a motion to go back into the regular meeting or exit the executive session?
Exit.
Exit, exit, okay. Tom, did you second?[1774.14]